That's where Craig is too.
Uh, we really can't start.
Morning everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Where's Mr. Cross? He's in the building.
He's outside, in the front there, him and Craig too.
Hey Dwayne, give me a favor on that Craig, even though we're ready to get started. They're out flaunting I think.
Just tell them we're starting without him. That'll do it. You know, you hooked him up.
Did I? Oh, that's right. Well, I did. Yeah, alright, uh.
How are you sir?
Good, good.
Oh yeah, we're waiting on Chuck too. We can't start without you Chuck.
Oh no. Well, we can get on through here.
Alright, well, we will go ahead and get started.
Yeah, we got some order.
As always, we'll call to order this board meeting of December 3rd, nineteen, oh, twenty eighteen. It's gonna be a long day already. As always, we start with an invocation. If y'all will pray with me please. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for many blessings and opportunities you provide us each and every day as we start this. As we enter the holiday season, I always keep the forethought that we're here to celebrate the birth of Jesus your son, who gave up his life for, that our sins may be forgiven as we move forward. Be with this board, other boards, that they start this, this month of December, that they make the good decisions for the citizens of their respective county and/or city. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Uh, public comments. I see Mr. Guy Warren and Mr. Paul Magason on the calendar. Come on up gentlemen.
Amen, I'm gonna break down.
Oh, y'all are back.
We're back, but this will be the last time for a little while.
We're back.
Now, like we always do, we just put the loose copy there in the front, so that's what y'all want to sort of streamline and look at. Now, in the folder is a lot more detailed information there. You may wanna look at. Now, we marketed to, and in the detail report is a list of the companies that we went out and marketed the workers' compensation to. There was absolutely no one else in the ballgame compared to the Mississippi Public Entity Fund. And that's who you've currently been with now for the last four, four or five years.
We had a little break where we were with a standard insurance company for about four years.
Yeah.
We went back to the public entity.
But on this sheet that we did, the handout, the loose handout, you can see the rates here. Broken down from street and road, police, to all the other class codes that you do have. Now, one of the things I wanted to point out is on workers' compensation, you'll, you'll form up what they call an experience mod. And it's almost like a report card that any work comp carrier bases the premium off of your experience mod. Your mod actually, it went up. It was a one-ten last year. It went up to a one-point-seventeen this year. Meaning that the claims have overrode the premiums. And, and that's what reflects the increase for the workers' compensation. That's one reason Paul marketed it so hard. We actually have the software in our office to calculate your experience mod, because sometimes they'll get it wrong. Any insurance company will get it wrong. So when Paul went back and recalculated it, they did have it wrong. But it was to your benefit, so we didn't point that out naturally.
Well, here's the thing, the Mississippi Public Entity is a self-insured trust. And so they don't go, they don't use the same rules and regulations that standard insurance companies use. So they're using a formula that's a dated formula, meaning they haven't updated their formula. If we were using the formula that the NCCI, National Council on Compensation Insurance uses now, you'd have a one-thirty experience mod, which would be, you know, thirteen more points of premium. So it's to our benefit.
Now, the good news is, a bad year will be rolling off, which will bring your experience mod down for the renewal next year, which will be a tremendous help.
As long as we close this year, how good.
And it's tracking good so far.
Yeah, so far it's tracking.
Um, now, the payroll is up, a little over half a million dollars, which is all based on payroll. So by the time you increase your mod, the payroll's up, that is your increase.
So you're talking about two thousand seventeen actual figures on the workman's comp stuff that made it go.
Well, there's a chart that I got in here that I think is pretty good, that kinda gives you a really good description of where your premiums are. This is the detailed chart that shows actual claims. And then this one right here shows, the blue line is claims. The red line is actual premium dollars. So we had two years, which were fifteen and sixteen years, that were not good from a claims standpoint. Several claims in that. You know, a lot of times, it's either street and road or police that we're having that situation from. The last two years, the eighteen and seventeen year have been pretty good. So what Guy was saying is, this year with eight hundred thousand, we're hoping that, that, well, the three hundred fifty thousand is gonna roll off. We'll have one more year of eight hundred thousand that we'll have to deal with on our experience mod.
Okay. But one of the things, going back, looking back, just to put it in perspective of what you're paying compared to the norm, and Paul found this, and if you go back to like oh-four, did you track that picture in here?
Yeah, I got it in there. If you look back from oh-four to now, your pre, your payroll's increased from twelve million dollars to eight, almost nineteen million dollars. It's a fifty-seven percent increase in payroll, which your rate has actually gone down on the average. Like, we know when we've got payroll, we're gonna have to pay payroll, like, seven-point-six-five for social security. Well, your payroll rate for workers' comps have actually gone down a little bit. From three-point-nine-one percent in two thousand four to two-point-nine-four percent for the renewal. So that's a thirty-three percent overall decrease from two thousand four. Not a lot of things gone down.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, you know, it's still a lot of money, we understand that. But I, I think it's good to, to look at those things and, and see overall from the basis of, your payroll's gone way up, the rate has actually gone down a little bit overall.
Y'all, anybody, y'all do some kind of, maybe this is also just a question for you two. As far as going around and making sure that we're doing everything that we're supposed to be doing.
And that's one, one thing, and I think they'll say, like, especially the street and road. The Sheriff's Department is such a specialty class, to be honest with you, there's not a lot of people that can improve that. Like, they can do it internally, and which we all know, they do one of the best jobs of any county. But, but as far as street and roads, they do go out there, they have pretty regular meetings out there.
We had some regular meetings, I don't remember the gentleman's name from, right, that has come out and held several safety seminars with road. Sherry goes out there and they've met like at seven or seven-thirty in the morning.
As we'll make sure, we're doing everything.
Mm-hmm, well, more than, you know, and that's the thing about workers' compensation. Whether you've got an attorney that slips in the hall, or whatever the case may be, claims are gonna happen. And when you've got as many employees, as many people as you guys do, claims are gonna happen. It's just when, and how severe.
Don't be giving Craig any ideas.
Well, you know, we had that one bad, but all in all, you know.
Kinda give you a, a kinda example of, sixteen was a bad year for us. We had three claims that were over a hundred thousand dollars in that year. And one of them was a motorcycle-related claim. And, you know, two other ones were slipped, driven, and tossed. I mean, you just, we just had, we, we called it that year.
But to answer your question, you're going above and beyond what the majority of people do. I mean, you're doing about all you can do to prevent.
As we'll make sure.
But again, when you get, where you get a chance and y'all look through this, if any of you come up with any questions, call us and we'll meet with you individually or whatever, and go over and explain it the best we can.
Alright. Thank you gentlemen. Any other questions for these guys? Appreciate it guys, thank you very much. Mr. Shannon, is anybody else up? Any more public comments? Now we'll move on. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of November fifteenth.
The move.
Motion Mr. Cross, second Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Mrs. Smith, is there a motion? The consent agenda.
The move.
Motion Mr. Morrison, second Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Mr. Sullivan, come on up.
Just three items today. Authority issued check to the post office for ten thousand five hundred dollars.
The move. Motion approved.
Motion Mr. Morrison to approve, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Next please.
I don't be petition to change the assessment, two thousand eighteen rental personal property assessments.
The move.
Motion Mr. Morrison, second Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. C please.
Petition to adjust to two thousand eighteen home state extension supplement rule.
The move.
Motion Mr. Morrison, second Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Thank you sir, we appreciate it. Ms. Bridget, do we have a form to fill out on this bid opening?
Yes, we do.
Uh, we don't get one, okay. Oh, I guess I see what you're saying, yeah. Number one, traffic safety.
Alright, the first bid was received electronically from Traffic Control Products. And it has the different items that we bid out. Do you want me to call out everyone on my, or?
No ma'am.
Thank you Jay.
We're, we're facing electrical shut-off here, so let's just leave it as quick as.
Oh, you're really good.
Yep.
The second bid for traffic, for the safety applications was received from Lane Line. And I recommend those be taken under advisement.
The move.
Motion Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries.
The second bid opening is for soil stabilization. One bid was received from AdCamp Incorporated, it's six dollars and fifty cents per square yard. I recommend that be taken under advisement.
The move.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Next please ma'am.
The next bids are for polyurethane foam application, application. We received one electronically from Robertson Construction. Concrete sidewalk leveling and lifting, twelve dollars per pound. Concrete curb and gutter leveling and lifting, twelve dollars per pound. Void filling and undersealing, eleven dollars per pound. The second bid for that is received from Fuddall Construction. Concrete sidewalk leveling and lifting, nine dollars and twenty-five cents per pound. Concrete curb and gutter leveling and lifting, nine dollars and twenty-five cents per pound. And void, void filling and undersealing, nine dollars and twenty-five cents per pound. Recommend those be taken under advisement.
The move.
Motion Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Next please ma'am.
The next bids are for asphalt leveling and patching. First bid received is from Dickerson and Bowen. For item one, for type-eight asphalt, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents per ton. Item two, the ultra-thin asphalt, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars per ton. This bid is from J&amp;L Enterprises. Item one, type-eight asphalt, ninety-two dollars and ninety-eight cents per ton. Ultra-thin asphalt pavement, ninety dollars and ninety-eight cents per ton.
I'm getting Mike a knife sharpener for Christmas.
Yeah.
I'm sitting here holding the letter opener, I'm sorry. Great.
See, this is, where's our worker comp people? This is kinda, you know, I'm sitting here watching him take the knife to his chest here.
On the last one, I'll give you that. The next bid is from AdCamp, I'm sorry. Type-eight asphalt, one hundred and eighty-eight, one hundred and eighty dollars per ton. There's no bid for ultra-thin.
How much did you say?
One hundred and eighty dollars per ton. Final bid is from AJ Construction. Item one, one hundred dollars per ton. Item two for the ultra-thin, one hundred and ten dollars and seventy-eight cents. I recommend those be taken under advisement.
The move.
Motion Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The next items I have, you can take them all together if you'd like. It's approval of copier contracts with RICO. There are two for justice court, two for the district attorney's office, and two for the jail.
Please ma'am, let's consolidate those down. Is there a motion for consideration?
The move.
Motion Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Bridget?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you ma'am, we appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Harrison, you did that well.
Thank you, thank you.
I approve, I make motion approve, roadwork accomplished, number, November eight, eighteen, roadwork scheduled for December.
Motion Mr. Morrison, second Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. B, C?
Well, I'd like to take B and C, but I wanna talk just a minute, Mr. Bob, if I can.
Why does my chest start hurting when I see B and C come up? And D, just.
Well, and this is gonna be, I, I think me and Craig and Tim have talked about this, and I wanna talk to y'all just a little bit, you know. We have these utilities, and they have public service commission, you know, authority to be putting this stuff in. But, you know, they're supposed to put it into our guidelines. Now, we've met with Seaspire, and we've met with AT&amp;T. What we have found out on the front end, that they basically draw the set of plans up. Y'all, we approve them, but then they go out and do their locates, and they put the utilities in. So it don't match what we're approving versus, I don't know, correct Craig on this, and, uh.
Are we even having all these companies even call and get their locates? Or they just?
Well, they, yeah, they call and get their locates, you know. Uh, but it's just, they said they don't have the staff to go out there, and they have a problem with eight-one-one, getting these locates on the front end to do their drawings by. So they just doing their drawings the best they can on the front end, and then getting their locates, and they're having to adjust from that point.
So is that clear in everybody's mind? There are two different locate procedures that we're talking about here. One is for the purpose of the utility creating their plans to install the infrastructure. So they're not actually calling eight-one-one and saying, "We're about to dig." They're calling and saying, "We need to draw a plan, and in order to do that, we need y'all to go locate existing utilities in the ground, so that we can then create our plans." That's two different things. And what we're being told by these utility providers is, eight-one-one does not have staff, personnel, third-party contracts that are sufficient for them to be able to get both the dig locates and the help us out with our drawings locates. They're saying, "We only have enough people and time to do the actual dig locates." So if you, if you call us twenty-four hours before you dig, we will go out and locate for that. But don't be bothering us with go out and help us find stuff so you can do your drawings right.
Well, I can kinda see that.
That's what they were there for.
I, yeah.
They're there to do all of the locating. We're just simply telling you guys, we're reporting to you guys what the utilities are telling us.
Yeah, when they locate, they, they're gonna, supposed to help them with the design too? The locate?
They're just like, we, we go out there, if we're gonna look at a road, doing some kind of widening project, first thing we do is call for a locate.
Right, right.
And we see where everything's located, and we survey that off, and take that data, and we've got that marked on our thing.
That's right.
Not that it's anything we go by, but that's how we draw up the draw.
Right, but I mean, it's not their place, not their place to go. They, they just locate it for you, this is where it is. Y'all figure out how you're gonna get around it.
Correct. We're simply reporting to you guys what's being reported to us, not making excuses. I'm just simply explaining to you that practically speaking, these utilities are, apparently they're finding out that they're not going to get any help out of eight-one-one for the purpose of their drawings that they submit to us. So what we end up getting is essentially a best-case scenario from the utility provider that's wanting a permit. We're going to try to put our utilities in the back five feet of the county road right-of-way. And they'll draw it on there like that. And unfortunately, what we're finding when we go out, in the case of one utility provider, they're putting it in the beauty strip in the subdivision, which is, not only is it not the back five feet, it's, it's inside the front two feet of our right-of-way.
So can we verify that through eight-one-one, that that is the case?
We haven't, but I.
We could, we, we verified it through their, well, for example, on Seaspire, where they come out with their red drawings, red lines, whatever they wanna call them, where they placing their stuff. Well, I would, right, I bet, I'd like to get a verification from it.
Well, I, I was, Jay, but this all happened Friday afternoon, our meeting with our last utility, and we just hadn't got that far yet.
Well, if they get up, if, if they just get it up front, do the initial one, can't the utility provider put on their drawings where everything is?
That's what I would think.
I don't know what the difference, where, the line's not moving. When they go there and they do the first locate for their drawing, why would?
They're not doing, they're not doing that first locate.
They're not, they're not doing that first locate.
That was kinda, that was my question.
They're just draw, they're drawing their best-case scenario where they, they think.
They're not going out in the field.
That's right.
Eight-one-one, we're, we're being told that eight-one-one is not going out at their request to do it, because they're telling them, "We're only in the twenty-four hour digging business."
Oh, they're not locating it two weeks ahead.
Correct.
They're, 'cause they're gonna come back and locate twenty-four.
They're gonna come back and locate when they get ready to go dig.
Oh, okay, I see.
But that's after they've already submitted.
But we don't have a plan that reflects where it's actually.
Because they don't know where the locate mark, where it's located till twenty-four hours prior to.
So basically what, basically what we found out is, these utility permits that we approve could hit where they at, or they could be fifteen foot one way or the other from where they're at.
We gotta do better than that.
Yeah, so the, because the locate's not coming out prior to, they're gonna only wait twenty-four hours prior to.
That's what they're telling us now.
Seaspire, AT&amp;T should be on the hook, if it's not a free service for themselves to locate those wires and put it on the plan if they wanna come in and go across our right-of-way.
Wouldn't that be the case if we were doing a reconstruction? They would locate and know exactly where they were? Oh, we're gonna have to do some work, yeah, I mean, so what's the difference?
Apparently what we're being told is that it's a new day, and eight-one-one is overworked. So I, I don't know that we have any experience on the county side about how eight-one-one would respond if we said, "We're about to do a reconstruct on Road X, we need you to go locate." We just hadn't done that recently, to be able to verify whether what we're being told is accurate. So, yeah, I think the first step would be to check with eight-one-one, see is it true that you guys are not wanting to go out and do design-type locates?
Well, design is, that sounds a little more complex. If they just want to locate for them to do the design, wouldn't you, I mean, I was thinking you thought, they were working with them to help design where they go.
That's what they're doing.
It just means them making at least two trips, is what he does. See, that's a big deal.
Well, I mean, what they'll have to do is, if they get it located, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, you might chime in here, but once you get them located, then you gotta go out and GPS those points. You gotta know where it is so you can put it on your design drawing, you know, to show, show them your design drawing.
Well, it's no different than if they went twice.
They just cutting some steps off of process, and somebody just sitting in the office looking at fan and landing circle, and they just drawing a line down it, and guessing about twenty-two feet right there, we're gonna put it. And, and when they get their locates done, and something's there, then they're gonna move, they're gonna adjust, and, and we was told they're gonna adjust in the field. They're not gonna call nobody and do anything different. They're gonna adjust.
And that's where we're having problems. They go rogue with me, and they start cutting, I mean, I, I give you a good example, this week, this last week. Take me back to the subdivision of Palisades, we cut water lines, we flood four, three or four houses over there. You can imagine how that rolls down. And so we've cut, we're cutting fiber, we're cutting cables, we're cutting infrastructure every single time we do these dig. And it's just a, so it's a free-for-all out there, because they won't go by what the permits say. They won't go to the depths the regulations say. And, and it's not necessarily a direct company, even though it falls back on them, these are contracted services that they put out in the field. And, you know, it goes into the, the full mess, but I've got a mess at the reservoir for sure. We've got multiple, multiple subdivisions that it's just gone crazy on them, so. And I don't even know that your meeting on Friday brought the right people to the table, did it?
Uh, you know, I mean, it brought the guys to the table that's drawing it up, and that's how we found out what, how the process was going right now, Daniel. But, I mean, as far as somebody up there.
We, I mean, if eight-one-one, if that is true, I think, you know, we need to be in touch with the public service commission, and, you know.
Yeah, but that's no different, if you couldn't, if you, you were scheduled to dig, and the weather was terrible, and you couldn't do it, you're a month later. You're gonna have to have them come back out there, uh.
Well, every eleven days you gotta get it relocated anyway. I mean, every eleven days you gotta get it relocated anyway, so it don't bother.
Until we really make somebody pick it up, it's not gonna matter.
We're simply reporting to the guys that they pushed off on to eight-one-one, and excuse. We would love to be able to give y'all more accurate drawings for your permit purposes, but we can't get eight-one-one to do what they're supposed to do.
Well, let's hear, let's hear the other side of the story. Let's hear a eight-one-one, what they say.
I can get that.
Good idea.
Hey, then the, then the other side of that was, after our meeting on Friday with AT&amp;T, they, they don't even have red lines, do they? To come back behind it? So we don't even know where they put it.
Well, they, they left the impression that they can provide those, and I think it's gonna, well, you know good and well that they don't want to. So I think it's gonna be incumbent upon us that we simply insist that they provide the red lines. And the, the impression that was left here was that they would do that. And we're gonna need to ask for it and confirm that we've got.
And, and my, and my recommendation is to hold off on anything, approving anything else until we get what we need to be able, I can take you to a good example on Castle Woods Boulevard. They cut a chunk out of our road, and it's not even patched the right way. AT&amp;T did, and it's a strip about from Bob to, to Jay, uh, Jay over here, that's just halfway patched. I bumped through it every single day, and I saw them cutting it. Which, I know when we get the red lines for that, they will cut through our road and hadn't fixed it right, 'cause they ran it underneath the road. Which I'm fairly certain we didn't approve that, but, e- either way, it, it's rogue on us and.
Was it, was it unable to bore that?
I guess not. So they had to cut down through the road to be sure they got it.
They got a bore head hung and tried to go in there.
Yeah, so I've got a strip cut out of our roadway on Castle Woods Boulevard, you know, so. I didn't know they did that anymore. I'm sorry, on Bradford, on Bradford, I'm saying, it's on Bradford. But, but my point is, it, it's all this, that's why we don't want red line, they don't wanna give us red lines. So it's, my answer is not to give them anything else until we get help on, on what's going on. Mike, what's your recommendation?
I'm fine, I would like to check with eight-one-one, I mean, that was kinda my.
At least put this off to the fourteenth, till we see what's.
I'm good with it. My kinda deal now. According to AT&amp;T, they're about through putting in all this fiber in the subdivisions.
That's the best news we got out of Friday, was that.
That's just AT&amp;T. But Seaspire's not. Yeah, they were right by it.
I understand that, I understand that. But I, I think we see, hopefully we see the light at the end of the tunnel with this fiber stuff in existing subdivisions. We simply, and I don't wanna overstep this, so you stop me before I get too far. But in new subdivisions, we just simply don't have these issues. Number one, we're requiring the developers to have separate utility easements, and make that clear to everybody. So they have to put their infrastructure outside of our road right-of-way. So in the future, our hope and prayer is, we won't be dealing with these kinds of issues anymore. Because there's a place for the utilities to go in the new subdivisions that's outside of our right-of-way. This whole regulation process that we're, is to try to protect our road guys when they're out there doing repair work on existing county roads. We, we wanna make sure that the utilities that are in our right-of-way are at an appropriate depth, that they're out of the way. We're not gonna snag them. That's what we're trying to do.
And for the same point, I think it's important that, since AT&amp;T's almost done, that they at least come back and give us the red lines of everything they put down.
Yeah.
For, for future issues, so.
Well, if they're, if they're to be, put them over here in what would be their right-of-way, and they move over into ours.
That's me.
We, what do we do?
We do.
Okay, but what, now that they have done that, you're saying they've done, basically two feet over.
Yeah, this is where we're in an existing subdivision where it is with separate utilities.
Right. This is an older subdivision we're digging with right now, Craig, but like Craig said, in new subdivisions, we shouldn't be facing this issue, you know, in new subdivisions.
We're being told by AT&amp;T's employees that they are almost done with existing fibers in existing subdues. That they're almost done with that. I think they're down to the last few subdues. So our own business as far as AT&amp;T is concerned, it's a goalway.
Yeah, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, they had to do a percentage deal, and they're about to recharge their percentage deal. And when they do, they're stopping.
They're requiring the lane fiber, and they're about to be done with that.
Okay.
Alright. Y'all, let's just put this off, and let me give eight-one-one, and see where we at, and then we'll, I'll talk to y'all in the process of that.
Oh, good.
So no action, no the record flick, no action taken on numbers B and C, is that correct?
Let's, let's hold off on D too.
D two, does the record.
You okay with that?
Taking on B, C, and D.
Look, I mean, I tell them the same thing, so I want to find out on the.
Anything else, Mr. Harrison?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Parker, you're up.
Well, we don't have to do that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four items on the agenda, the first item, just asking for acknowledgement, acknowledgement of, of a seat of an amended plat for Dogwood Trace Subdivision Phase Two. Amended, and this is in Supervisor District Four. This amended plat reflects that the emergency access that was shown on the original plat has been removed from the amend, amended plat.
Does that mean approval, does it? Make a motion we approve it, uh, this is something we asked for.
That's, that's correct, and this, this is, that emergency exit will be going away. Termination that it was not needed, so.
Motion by Mr. Gaines to approve, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries next, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, item B. Recommend approval of what we refer to as a preliminary and final plat for Spring Branch Drive Development, which is in Supervisor District Two. This is to reflect large lot subdivision with a maximum of seven lots and twenty-four hundred square foot minimums.
That's me, yeah, I'm good, recommend approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries next, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, item C, requesting authority to advertise for bids for Mill Creek Subdivision Drainage Improvements.
I'll make that.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Harris, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries D, please sir.
D, recommend award construction contract for the Spillway Road slash North Shore Parkway Widening Project number to Hemp Hill Construction Company, Inc. In the amount of one million five hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. And authorize the board president to execute all contract documents contingent upon approval of the Mississippi Department of Transportation.
I'll make that motion, but in mind, just our, our part of that's three hundred thousand or so.
This is about the NPO project.
Yep.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, anything else, Mr. Parker?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Slade.
Good morning, gentlemen, first item under my section is a public hearing on the Monroe-Dorman Conditional Use Permit, four ninety-nine Parker Roads, District Four. Mister, uh, Mister Monroe-Dorman is seeking a conditional use permit to place a twenty eighteen fourteen by sixty-six manufactured home at four ninety-nine Parker Road, this will be the second dwelling on a one point nine zero acre parcel, and this property is zoned A two. The home will be occupied by an elderly friend who needs someone to help with daily care. This time we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Monroe-Dorman Conditional Use Permit. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, we'll close the public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
Uh, make a motion to approve it.
Second, Mr. Gaines, to approve, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries B, please sir.
Uh, this is the, uh, public hearing for the Cleveland-Brown Conditional Use Permit, one twenty-three McCornell Circle, District Four. Uh, Cleveland Brown is seeking a conditional use permit for a twenty eighteen twenty-eight by seventy-six manufactured home that's been placed at one twenty-three McCornell Circle. It's a six point six six acre parcel of family land that's zoned RE one. There's an existing, there was an existing manufactured home on the property and it has been removed. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Cleveland-Brown Conditional Use Permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, at this time we'll close the public hearing, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries C, please sir.
Item C under my section is the public hearing for the Ann Bonita Nichols Rezoning Request, this is at thirty-nine sixty-two Highway four sixty-eighth, it's a District Three property. Um, Ann Bonita Nichols is seeking to rezone a portion of a one hundred and seventy-five point one four acre parcel on the southwest corner of Highway four sixty-eight and Highway four sixty-nine uh, from R one B to A one, the property is divided by Cedar Ridge Subdivision. Uh, the portion of the eastern side of the property that adjoins highways, highways four sixty-eight and four sixty-nine is zoned R one B. Uh, the portion of the west side of the property is zoned A one. Ms. Nichols is seeking to change the zoning from R one B to A one for that eastern portion. The primary use of the property has been agricultural for many years and the property adjoins A one zoning to the south. Uh, at this time, we will open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the rezoning request of Ann, Ann Bonita Nichols. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that particular matter. Uh, there is a condition here that we would like to state for the record, and that is that no manufactured housing of any kind can be placed on this property, assuming the rezoning is granted. Okay?
You closing the hearing?
Yes, sir, that hearing is now closed.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion myself, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries D, please sir.
Item D, uh, on the basis of item C having been granted, we, item D is now relevant and we will take a public hearing for Ann Bonita Nichols. And this is for a conditional use, use permit at thirty-nine sixty-two A, Highway four sixty-eight. Uh, Ms. Nichols is seeking a conditional use permit now to operate a fireworks stand and a Christmas tree lot at thirty-nine sixty-two A, Highway four sixty-eight. The proposed hours of operation are nine AM to ten PM, seven days a week, and I want to note for the record, that is during the approved dates for the sale of fireworks that are allowed by the state of Mississippi, county doesn't regulate that. So there are, there's a series of dates, both in December, early January, and then again in June, July, that, uh, that account for the dates that, that are available. So during those, uh, approved dates, the hours of operation would be nine AM to ten PM, seven days. Uh, the sale of fireworks is listed as a conditional use in A one, A two, and C three zoning districts. Uh, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if anyone is here to speak in opposition to the Ann Bonita Nichols Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition, we'll close that public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action on the conditional use request.
Let the record reflect that it's two separate lots, there's a fireworks stand lot and then there is a, um.
Christmas tree.
Christmas tree lot, thank you, uh, so, but I made the motion to approve.
Second.
Second, my, motion myself, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Slade.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
And I just found out the power's not going off, so keep up the good work, let's keep moving. So, what's next, Ms. Oster?
Ms. Oster.
Thank you, first item I have this morning is approval to renew our workers' compensation with Mississippi Public Entity, uh, Workers Comp Trust for two thousand nineteen and two thousand and twenty year.
Motion approved.
Second, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, B, please ma'am.
This is pay application number ten for our misdemeanor facility with Flagstar Construction, the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-five cents and authority to issue that check.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, C, please ma'am.
Acceptance of zero to three grant for youth court, Craig has looked over the paperwork and didn't find any problem, we would be a sub-grantee, it's seventy-five thousand dollars. It allows for hiring an employee that will track children between the ages of zero to three to make sure that they don't get lost in the system, so to speak. It is for an employee, but Paul Bowen has assured me that he's talked to the person that's gonna be an employee and the judge and him agreed that when the grant goes away, this position does go away.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, D, please ma'am.
Uh, approval for Hersog CPA Company to prepare the financial statements for the year end of September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. We will receive a state audit this year, but to be compliant, we have to pre- prepare the financials. Wanda has not done this by herself, Angela has all the paperwork, she's given a price of fifteen thousand and some odd dollars. And then if we have to have a single audit, um, it would be ninety dollars an hour, I don't think we're gonna qualify, but she said any work that, uh, Wanda can do that will load, lessen the amount of hours they work, therefore lessen the price.
But we've, have we had to do this before?
No, we haven't, because when Angela and them come in, they do the financials for us.
That's part of their cost?
Yes.
So if any is, Wanda is a CPA licensed.
She is, she has just.
Well, I mean, that don't matter, we're still paying.
I know, but I mean, for our health and life.
Right, and hopefully this will be the only year, once she gets all the work papers, she goes through it, makes her note, learns, this will be a, a preparation for her to do it in the future.
I got you, all right. So move.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, anything else, Ms. Oster?
Not under my section.
All right, appears that Mr. Cross has backed up on the agenda again.
I like it.
You people from the reservoir just wear.
It's just something all the time, the good thing is, the item A I want to talk about, item A and B both, uh, is gonna help everybody in Rankin County. Basically what this is, is that, we talked about the AT&T FirstNet stuff that was brought back to us during the summer, I think it was. Uh, what this is basically saying, one of the good ways this was tested was during Hurricane that ripped through Panama City. All the cell service and communication were down, so all the responders that were going into this area, if they weren't on the AT&T FirstNet, they didn't have any comms in that area. So AT&T had set up an area over there, got a lot of people transferred into that system and it allowed those guys to be able to talk. What these are, these are the MiFi devices that would come in, uh, this would be enough for our EOC and, um, a couple for the road department, to be able to implore them with communications on a MiFi device. So for example, we'd come in and, and we'd get wiped out cell wise from a tornado, ice storm, something like that. You turn on your MiFi devices and even with their ceasefire phones that they, they would have, because we hadn't changed over from that, um, they could turn on, just like hit into a MiFi or Wi-Fi connection and still be able to text and communicate. So this would give us that ability. Item B, I was talking about both of them for just a second, item B basically puts a, a command point, uh, inside, uh, Mike Word's vehicle along with Mike Harrison's, that gives them Wi-Fi capabilities to communicate with our fire departments, uh, and whoever through a MiFi connection inside their truck, in a mobile truck, a stronger spot, so I'll make the motion for A and B combined to be approved.
I'll second it, but I would like to ask a question.
Yep.
Go ahead.
If we have a catastrophic event, I mean, like a hurricane, like Katrina that took out the satellite, I mean, took out all the towers. Uh, will they still be, they don't have to hit a tower with this, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
It reflects right from, I mean.
Yeah. Word's been cleared up.
Yes, sir, you would still have to hit a tower, the thing about it is, there's a, uh, a cow and a colt here in, uh, the metro area, which is cell on wheels or a cell on light tower, or light trailer. Um, they also have, uh, drones, there's one in Atlanta, uh, there's not one here in the metro area that they could deploy, uh, within a couple hours. We could also request those, if you had a, um, Pearl Day, for example, you're gonna have a massive influx of folks. We put in a request to have the colt moved over to Pearl, uh, just because there's, just like they do at the state ball games, the ceasefire brings a colt over there, uh, where you can actually have, uh, cell coverage. But yes, if it was knocked down, they would, they would bring us one, and there's one here in the metro.
I mean, anybody that's in law enforcement, our first responders, when Katrina was here, and especially if you had to work on the coast.
We had nothing.
That's what they carried down.
Unless you could see somebody, you weren't gonna talk.
The hurricane down in Florida, that's what they carried, they, they used drones and they used, uh, colts and cows.
We didn't have, we didn't have that option on Katrina.
They didn't have.
So what's this doing to our budget?
All right, so basically what this is, our MiFi devices we have right now, we pay forty dollars a month, this is cheaper than what we have right now through Verizon. So we're basically getting rid of our Verizon, uh, MiFi's are really what they're called, we're getting rid of those to a cheaper rate.
I thought we already approved this month ago.
We discussed it.
We discussed it, eventually.
My question, what was that we were talking about a few months?
We allow the responders to be able to get it on, on their own personal dime.
Yeah, but I thought we were supposed to have something switched for us.
Yeah, we, just, this is it, this is it.
I think our ceasefire contract was a conflict.
Well, we're still keeping our phones, the issue was, we had our, everybody's phones were through ceasefire, okay? So we didn't want to pay the bit large fee to cancel out all these contracts, all right, so basically all these, what this is, this is for the MiFi devices that will allow you to have a Wi-Fi device, you'll be able to take with you. We have those now, we have them through Verizon, and I think it's forty dollars a month. This is cheaper than that, plus better coverage, and plus gives you the FirstNet, so, so all you're doing is, is stopping the Verizon stuff going on to the AT&T FirstNet, Ms. Laura?
This contract will also allow for the cell phones as they roll off and y'all want to change to those phones that will allow only first responders and certain people to be on them, it will also allow for that. The second portion of this, when that, uh, Cradle Point, uh, Net Cloud Essentials that they're talking about will be in both Mike's trucks and also the mobile command. It is four thousand and something dollars per year that it will cost.
Per truck.
But what we.
No, that, that's a total for all three.
That's a one-time hardware, if you will.
But tell them the savings on that.
But she's saying it's per year.
Well, it says, is it only that, it says per year on it, okay?
That's a one-time charge and then it's the thirty-two, whatever it is.
Okay, that's the additional charge, right.
That's just hardware.
And when you switch over, like, uh, Daniel was saying, when you switch over the MiFi's or the phones, there will be no additional charge, it will just transfer from one company to another.
In the mobile command, what this is gonna allow us to do is to not turn on the, uh, six or eight thousand dollar satellite a year that we just turned off, that I brought to you earlier in the year. Uh, we're going from that to thirty dollars a month.
The reason that's important is because now that we switched off that satellite, starting December first, we need comms for the EOC, so, and you're saving money.
Uh, we need it for Mike Harrison too, is he gonna give us, you know, demo on how to use it?
Yes.
Absolutely, the, the thing with, with putting this in, the thing with putting it in Mike's truck too, is, uh, absolutely critical. There's not gonna be much of anything of any scale at all that I'm gonna be on, that Mike Harrison is not, we're not gonna be jointed to hip on. Whether it's equipment or maps, uh, the big dam that blew out over here on forty-nine, uh, it would have been so nice. So nice to be able to pull up our maps, couldn't do it. Um, and we're looking at putting some, uh, Mike and I are putting some computers into our trucks where we can actually, uh, bring this stuff up and actually print off some things, so, um, again, would have been great Saturday morning. Uh, we had a forty-nine year old man that was lost in the woods and, uh, even, even the mobile command was no-go, I mean, it is what it is, so, but we're working on that, so.
I'm good with it, I'm good.
There's a motion by Mr. Cross to approve A and B, I think it was seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Uh, all right, Ms. Oster, back in your court, let's like.
We might be able to take, um, CD and S together, these are, um, contract cash agreements, network services, tax collector for purchasing operations, um, for the Sheriff's Department, IT. And Marcus has been working on those.
Yeah, so if you're familiar with the outage that we had on Thanksgiving week, uh, where our main site circuit connecting to all the remotes went down. We're basically down for all of Wednesday and half of Thanksgiving Day, uh, for communication to remote sites, that shut down, shuts down a lot of phone services, data services, stuff like that. This is a first step in a, in a multi-step plan to try and get redundant connectivity to every single remote site that we have, so that if that happens again, uh, we don't have a, you know, we don't have a failure. If, if one circuit goes down, we're still up and running and then we can address it, but, you know, when we need to with the carrier. But, uh, and it gives carriers a little bit of time to work on the issue, but we were having to escalate AT&T on that one incident that lasted a day and a half, they have eighty-one pages of notes. And they had over fifteen people working on the issue, trying to get us back up and running, but it still took a day and a half to correct the issue. Um, so, you know, that, that day and a half, there's a lot of people out of remote access, um, so, um, this should address that, or this is a first step in addressing that, and we're putting redundant connectivity to every site. And this is for the sites that can, can have Comcast and need Comcast service.
How much is that per site?
Um, so I can give you some exact numbers, uh, right now, uh, multiple, multiples of these sites actually have contracts in place. The IT department, uh, currently has a, a contract in place for a, uh, for an internet service that is, uh, at a lower speed, that was on a really old contract. We're going from a hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-five cents a month, uh, plus tax, to a hundred and ninety-one thirty, and we're going from twenty megabits to a hundred and fifty megabits on that service. Um, the sheriff's office, uh, there's actually no change there, they're just applying a discount to that, um, so that their current rate goes down, um, because their contract has just been renewed. Um, on emergency operations, uh, we're putting in a hundred and fifty meg internet, um, which they don't currently have, um, the, the backup there at two hundred and seventy-one dollars a month. And it's a tax collector in Flowood, a hundred and thirty-four dollars and. And at the tax collector in Flowood, a hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-five cents a month for seventy-five meg internet. And they'll, we'll use both circuits at all times at these sites and just pass the traffic over both of those.
I'm sure we didn't budget that.
I've actually, actually, this can come out of my current budget if we need.
I don't know if you wanna.
Could possibly be room in it.
Okay. Alright, well, I mean, I know everybody's all crazy about redundancy.
Yeah, the only new services we're doing is actually for the Emergency Operations Center and the Tax Collector.
So we're really looking at two.
The other two existing.
I make moves, approve all of them.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, to approve C through L, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries.
Hey, I wanna say one thing to Marcus, though. During the work in the elections, I saw him there working really hard the night, Tuesday night and all that. Everything went very smoothly from everything I heard on my side.
Appreciate that.
So I wanna tell you, I appreciate you. And he was ankles deep in it all Tuesday night, and was there all day with all the election commissioners, less than talked extremely high about you, and a lot of good remarks for you, so thank you for Tuesday night.
Thank you very much.
We do appreciate it. Anything else, Ms. Oster? Anything for executive session?
We've got one item, if you're willing to entertain it, under additional business. And I'm looking back at Tim to make sure we're all ready to go on it. We wanna follow up on that emergency road and bridge fund application.
Oh, yeah.
That has a deadline out there looming on it. And so if y'all are ready to pay for that, we have a resolution that's available. And it includes, it includes the four sites, bridge sites that were mentioned to you guys during our work meeting last Thursday. We mentioned to you that we have bridges, four bridges that have been identified and are receiving, essentially they are receiving heightened scrutiny in terms of the frequency of inspections that occur. Most of our bridges are on a two-year rotation, is that right? Two years? And so we've got four bridges that are on a one-year rotation and being reviewed, because in the past, it's been discovered that some of the bridge panels, and I hope I'm getting my wording right here, the actual. Deck, yes, thank you. We're seeing some exposed rebar in them, and that's not indicative of the safety of the bridge, it's just simply something that is necessary for them to keep an eye on. And so with the access of these funds, the thought process was, let's make an application. Our bridges, generally speaking, are in good shape. This board has always done a fantastic job of making sure we stay on top of our bridge safety in Rankin County, and we were one of a very few counties in the state that did not get singled out for the bridge closures that came about through the Office of the Governor. And so we were pleased with that, but it may make it somewhat interesting in terms of whether or not we can get any of our bridges to qualify for emergency funding. So our thought process is, let's put this in, this resolution in, and let's see what we get. And it doesn't hurt to ask, and then we'll go from there. One additional thought process that we had, Tim, do you wanna help me with this one, because I'm probably messed this up? Mr. Bob raised the question, the fund mechanism is labeled emergency road and bridge fund program. And so the curiosity was, well, we know about the bridges, and we understand that that was apparently the primary focus, but the thing is labeled for emergency road and bridge fund program. And so the thought process occurred to us that we might be able to put one of our road improvement projects into the pipeline and request funding through this program for one of our road projects that is far enough along. And so.
You say far enough long, is that what?
Right-of-way design, maybe even right-of-way at a point where it's almost fully acquired. And so what we did was, we picked out, and this is just for, this is just for y'all to determine whether or not you wanna go for this. We thought we would stick Gunner Road in here and request through the emergency fund and see if we can get some funding for that. That could potentially help us.
And it would work other than Andrew Chapel because of the right-of-ways, the way it stands in as far as right-of-way and something like that.
Correct, it's already in the hopper as, and being considered for funding through other mechanisms. We already know that it has a place at the table for other potential funding sources that are there. And so the thought process was, if we can free up funding for other projects by having Gunner at least considered for this level of funding, that may put us in a much stronger position for some of our other projects. Again, we have no expectation, we don't know whether it would qualify or not, but the thought process was, let's put it in here and see if we can get some funding for it. If they won't fund that, then perhaps they would fund the bridge projects for us.
The bridge that we've had before us for a year and a half with the railings out at the reservoir.
North Shore, does that qualify?
Why would that not qualify as a bridge project under this? Or an emergency road?
It potentially could, the issue with.
Okay, well, let's do it then.
The issue with the North Shore, is that the bridge we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Is, we're faced with some utility relocations that have to be done in order for the guardrail to be put in properly, and so the intent of this money is to be able to spend it really, really fast. So when you start talking about utility relocations, lots of right-of-way to buy, I'm afraid that they're, I mean, they're wanting all these done and dusted relatively quickly.
Like stimulus package was.
But what is that, are you gonna put that in there?
Like stimulus package.
I mean, just to put it in there?
Certainly.
Because I mean, that's a hundred and fifty thousand, our pocket's gonna come out if we don't.
Or more.
Yeah, or more.
Right. Much more.
Yeah. And add that and submit six different ones.
Would it, wouldn't hurt, would it?
I don't know how they're gonna judge it, to be honest with you, I have no idea.
We don't have to put anything in with it.
The damage bridge rails seem to me to be somewhat of an emergency.
Right.
Safety.
This, and this, you don't match anything or split anything, it's.
Basically with this funding, the way they've stated in their documentation is, the amount you apply for, or the lowest bid on the project, whichever's lower, that's how much they're gonna fund.
Motion to add this to the agenda.
That would come out of road and bridge, that's missing out, right?
Out of bridge.
Out of bridge, yeah.
Motion by Mr. Bishop to add it to the agenda, second by Mr. Cross, all in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, it's added to the agenda. Motion to approve by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Anything else for discussion? Do we have, I see somebody back there.
I just gotta signal that we're good.
Alright, anything for executive session?
I've got.
You got this gentleman back here?
Trey Jones is on the way and wanted to visit with you guys about a couple of different things, for sure. One of the matters that he needs to address with you guys as an executive, and he said he would be here at ten o'clock.
Come on up, sir, and tell us what you're inquiring about. Tell us who you are, where you live, and the purpose of your comments.
Yes, sir, good morning. My name's Ron Ferguson, I own and reside at the property of five eighty-three Acorn Lane in Oak Grove subdivision. I have a general complaint and would like to have it duly noted, the contractor who's running the drainage sewer. First off, my experience in construction tells me that they don't have a clue. But here's my problem, they have interrupted my utilities at my property, they've dug it all up, my mailbox is laying out in my yard, I can't get mail service. I tried to get in my driveway last week and I got stuck because they had backfilled a trench with gumbo mud, which my truck is ill-equipped to handle. I spent money trying to get all the mud un-impacted from my wheel, so I wouldn't lose control of my truck. And like I said, my major problem is my mail service. They've taken my mailbox up. Now, the other issue I have is the fact that the safety of children playing and people walking in that street is seriously impacted. The other day, I observed some children playing on the pipes they dug up, they're three-foot diameter concrete pipes. Children were playing on those with that mud all over them and around them. There's exposed rebar sticking up, which will cause an impalement. There's danger of the children being injured. I mean, there's no barricades, there's no.
Where's this pipe placed, the place, pipe they've taken out?
That's that storm drain over in Oak Grove.
It's a storm drain.
I know, but it's what they took out, I thought you said.
Yes, sir, they took that out.
Where do they put it, though?
On the side of the road.
They've been putting that pipe out there for months, sitting in the middle of the road.
Yeah, but the old pipe now is laying on the side of the road, and it's all covered with mud and construction debris.
I guess what I was getting at is, the pipe is in the road right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
So the kids are out in the road, basically.
Yes, well, where the sidewalk used to be, they dug the sidewalk up, and it's all gone now. Like I said, I tried to get in my driveway last week and I got stuck.
I think I got a picture of that last night.
Do I?
I got a picture of that last night, and.
I have many pictures, if you want.
Yeah, I think that was.
It's incredible.
I hated anybody that had to deal with that.
Now, there's mud all over the road, and the road is like slimy, that's the best I can describe it. We're having to park our cars in the street and then walk to our house, through whose every yard is not slimy at the time, because like in my driveway, I can't even get to my property. I'm just locked out. I understand last week they cut a gas main and caused a great deal of confusion, I wasn't there. I understand first responders probably had to come and all that, and the gas company had to come and fix the broken pipe that they did. Second was, there's no signage on the job site. I have no idea who the contractor is. There's no signage on their trucks whenever they show up, they maybe work two days a week, and the place is just totally wiped out. That's the only description I can say, it's just wiped out. I never received any notification that the work was gonna be done. I haven't heard from my homeowners association on it, I mean, that's obviously not your concern, but I mean, it's just a frustrating proposition. What I would like to know is where, who do I file a formal complaint for the safety inspections of this job, the easement disruptions, as you will? They're over in my yard, actually. I don't know where the utility easements are, some of them are in, you know, outside the road right-of-way, some of them are in the road right-of-way. The main pipe that they're putting in is in the right-of-way, and I've looked at all the pipes that they've dug up, there was supposed to be a crushed drainage pipe there which preceded the entire contract. The pipes that I've seen come up in A1 shape, except for tore them up getting them out.
Well, that's not true.
Well.
We did a camera through them.
Yeah.
But, you know, at this point, I'm much rather not even done the project, it has been, you know, a pain.
I'm sure.
I understand that, and nobody wants this through any more than I do, I can assure you.
Yes, sir, I fully agree. Well, just to give you some information, the gas company was trying to run new, they've had to run new services to all the houses, because the gases run over the top of the pipe.
Right. Which has prolonged the project even more.
Oh, yeah. The other problem is, is they couldn't drain the water out of the pipe until they went down the street, opened it up, and dug the debris out of it. It wasn't collapsed, it was stopped up. And I haven't, you know, I've looked at, you know, I drive over there, drive down the street every day, I've looked at all those pipes, they're all intact, except for the broken joints, you know, where they pulled them out.
The issue wasn't the pipes themselves, it was the roots growing through them, it was the, they wasn't connected, you know?
Yeah.
There's a reason why we're doing this.
I understand all that, and I'm not in any argument with it, but on Oak Grove Boulevard or Oak Grove Drive, whichever they call it, they sleeved those pipes.
Yes, sir.
And they did a very neat, quick, and humane job, and they didn't disrupt anybody's property access, they didn't cause any damage to the property, didn't disrupt utilities. They just went in, sleeved the pipe, and done.
And that's what we wanted to do on this section.
Right.
You know, and it would cost us a lot less money, too.
I know the county spent an awful lot of money to get that done.
Well, you're gonna spend over a million dollars doing this.
Yes, sir. And I just need some relief. I need somebody to come inspect that job and look at it and supervise these people.
Somebody out there on site, I can't tell you for sure, and I understand your issues, and I, getting stuck in your driveway is, you know, unexcusable.
Yeah, I mean, I went to the frame, what they did is, they knocked off Friday.
Yeah, I just found out about it this morning when I got here.
And in their haste to get out of there and go to the beer hall or wherever they went, they pushed all that gumbo mud off in that hole and left it from my driveway. They didn't provide any topping, any slag, any, anything.
And it's my understanding that our inspector on the job site, it told them they need to do that, contractor left anyway.
Yeah, well.
I really, I mean.
It was a mess, that's all I can tell you.
We're not making excuses, we're just gonna try to figure out what we do to fix it.
Well, they need supervision, bottom line.
I imagine you're gonna get some.
I certainly hope so. If anything else, can they clean the mud out of the street?
Exactly.
Eight-one-one came out there and marked all the utilities, everything, you can't find any markings anywhere, it's all covered in mud, it's covered with dirt.
I talked to some people today about that, actually, but if we go out there and water it and wash it off, we got exposed holes down there, we're about to cover up with water.
I understand that.
I don't know if they can or not, honestly.
I understand that, but you can't walk on the pavement.
Oh, it was terrible, and I know it's so humid, it was already slippery just on concrete.
The only other good thing is, if you get dry sun all week, if you take the sweeper, the sweeper can go in.
And then we gotta contend with the dust. It's a no-win situation, I understand that. But, you know, I just, I'm just seeking some relief and some supervision and some safety inspection on this job, because all that exposed rebar and kids, and you're talking potential for disaster here.
We'll get it.
Well, I'm glad you brought it to all of our attention, I know it's Mr. Bishop, found out about it, and I know he's working what he can with it, we're all aware now, and we're gonna see what we can do to give you some relief.
Well, I can provide you all the pictures you want.
Oh, there was, one of your neighbors sent me about ten of them last night, and all of them were bad.
Yeah, pretty much, we read it at tar and feather.
Yeah, I understand, I do, I do.
But anyway, I thank you for your indulgence, and any help we can get would be sorely appreciated. Do I need to register a formal complaint or anything?
You have, you have.
I have, okay.
And this is recorded.
Alright, good.
Yeah.
I thank you much.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson, we appreciate it. Anything else, and while we wait on Mr. Jones, who's apparently ten minutes late, but that's alright. Trey, the attorney. Y'all wanna discuss real quick your Christmas present for the board president?
Oh, yeah.
Same thing we bought last year, man.
I forgot.
It was real quick. We were all in grips. Actually, we thought about yours to us as our, for all our support.
You know, how much trouble it is to sign all these documents? Ah, he's finally here. We'll entertain a motion to discuss the need to go into executive session.